Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. Council Clerk will call, roll call of members.
Counselor Vito. Counselor Avadana.
Present.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Robinson. Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Zabat.
Present.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine members present have a call.
Great. Now we move on to memoriam's and celebratory resolutions. We have nothing presented before us. So we move on to the next item, which is public speaking. We have the public speaking portion for who anyone who wishes to speak. You have four minutes. Please clearly state your name and your home address for the record. Any members here present wish to speak?
Good evening, Chelsea City Council. Thank you for allowing me to address you all this evening. My name is Roseanne Bonjimani, and I live at Seven Bell Street. I first want to begin tonight by saying the process by which the city has allowed or encouraged public participation is woefully inaccurate, inadequate. When I was leaving the house this evening, my daughter said, "You're leaving the house? Where, why?" And I said, "Well, because of Chelsea City Council." And the city hasn't yet figured out how to let us participate by home. And so I wasn't planning to come up this evening. I didn't know that the reconsideration for the zoning requests were on the agenda until late this afternoon. And my husband had to work late, and so thankfully, he got home in time for me to run out because I wanted to make comments to you all, but I didn't know that they would actually be heard or considered. So I think the process by which the city is allowing public participation must be addressed immediately. The second thing I'd like to say is I'm not sure why you're reconsidering the vote this evening on the zoning. I understand the process by which you're asking for reconsideration. But I want you to think about, for every failed motion, will you ask for reconsideration the next day? For every disagreement, will there be a reconsideration on the next agenda? And then I want to ask you one more time. Do you want to take up zoning changes? While they may not be major zoning changes, do you want to take up zoning changes with almost no public participation? If the only folks you've heard from on this matter are myself and my colleague, that is ridiculously inadequate. We must be encouraging full engagement of our community as we're looking at our zoning changes. I want to address something that the city manager said a few weeks ago. He and I agree on so many matters. And what he said was, "This zoning change on increasing density that's in front of you this evening, again, isn't a radical plan." And I agree with him. It is not a radical change in our zoning. However, it is signaling to developers outside of our city that we want to increase density. You are welcome here to maximize the housing units in our city and reduce the open space. Reduce the number of folks who actually have good quality of life. Just build out the lots. Come on into Chelsea. We're welcoming you. And I want to ask you, who is this housing for? Yes, we have a housing crisis in the region, but I challenge you to tell me of all of the housing units that have come online in the last 10 years, how many of them have been for Chelsea residents? More recently, over the last four years, let's look at all of the zoning approvals by the ZBA and see how many of those have been for Chelsea residents. Because I want you to, again, think about all of the people that we know, our neighbors, our fellow colleagues here in Chelsea, our community members. Are they able to buy an apartment that has been conduised and is now going for $500,000? Are they buying those units? 500, 525, 600,000 dollars? This is who we are creating housing for. We are not addressing a crisis here in Chelsea. We are just welcoming more folks to come into our community. And we're not thinking broadly and long term about what kind of city we want to have, what kind of neighborhoods we, as the entire residents of Chelsea, would like to see, what type of housing. If you're saying it really is for the residents of Chelsea, then put in a clause that says affordable housing. We'll increase density for affordable housing. I don't see that happening. So I ask you again, who is this housing for? Then I'd like to just point out that in the last 10 years, we've brought on hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of new units of housing. How many new parks, I ask you? How many new parks have we brought on to accommodate all of the new folks that we've brought into our, our city? One park, a dog park under the bridge. That is the only new park we have built in the last 10 years. The one before that was Anita's Place in 2011, the day before my son was born. And that was Green Roots spearheading that with the city, and kaboom. And before that was Creekside Commons. Again, Green Roots spearheading that in 2008.
You have one minute.
I'm sorry?
One minute.
Thank you. As we're continuing to look at reducing open space, increasing density, we're thinking about the immediacy of tax dollars. We are not thinking about the long game of the health and well-being of our neighborhoods, of our present residents, and what we want the future of our city to be. I ask you to not vote in favor of this reconsideration tonight. And if the reconsideration is moved forward, I ask you to vote against the increased density. Let's hit pause. And as a community with more than two people participating, let's have a fully inclusive process of engaging our community members to talk about what we've learned from the lessons of COVID and how we want to see our community move forward and what zoning changes we would like to see holistically. Let's not play the short game. Let's play the long game. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? You have four minutes. State your name and address.
Thank you.
For the record.
My name is Manuel Tache. I live in To nickel Street apartment two. And today I'm here because I've attended a couple of meetings regarding the city charter review. And I myself, as a member of the community, proposed that we should implement a right to vote for noncitizen residents of Chelsea in municipal elections. Unfortunately, the proposal was not accepted by the city charter review committee. And some supported the proposals, but the majority did not. I am here today to ask you to take this issue seriously. We are talking about a civil rights movement here. We're talking about a voting rights movement here. We've known that throughout history, there have been multiple restrictions on voting here in the United States. And today, we are looking at one. And it goes like this. I don't care if you spend 20, 30, 40, 50 years in this community. If you were not born here, you cannot vote. That's the kind of restriction on voting that we're looking at right now. Doesn't matter if you spend your entire life here. If you were not born on this side of the border, you cannot vote. And you can say that some people can't get their citizenship. I got my citizenship, and I was not born on this side of the border. But the path for citizenship, I can tell you from personal experience, is gruesome. It takes a long time. And the government currently does not support a lot of the people, immigrants that come to this country seeking refuge. It is my belief that noncitizens will get the right to vote in municipal elections in this city and in our neighbors, neighboring cities soon. The question is only a matter of time. This is my belief simply because America is on a path to progress. There have been ups and downs, but in the long run, we keep getting better. We keep tightening loose ends in our understanding of justice. I stand here today to ask you to join me on the right side of history. If you support my proposal of getting the right to vote for noncitizen but residents of Chelsea, please reach out to me to discuss how we can work together to make this happen sooner rather than later. If you do not support this, and I repeat, if you do not support my proposal, still, please reach out to me because I would love to hear why you think silencing your community is rightful, just, and legitimate. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other member of the public? Please state your name, address. You have four minutes.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jasmine Jovell, and I reside at 141 Orange Street. And I am here in support of the proposal introduced by Manuel Tache of giving the rights to noncitizen residents of Chelsea to vote in municipal elections. Chelsea, very much like many other cities in Massachusetts, is largely made up by immigrants. They're working in our banks, in our grocery stores, as mailmen, and as our taxi drivers. I believe that one of the reasons why Chelsea is such an efficient city is because they are everywhere, and they do such a good job at making sure everything is done correctly. And I think that one is the, that is one of the most beautiful aspects of Chelsea, its diversity. And these people are proud to live in Chelsea, and yet most do not get a vote in how their cities and how their home is run. They do not get a say in the decisions that greatly impact not only their lives, but the lives of their families. The founding fathers built this country on the foundation of a democracy because they believed that voting is a right and not a privilege. And I think that Chelsea should take that into account. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? State your name, address. You have four minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maria Valan Power. I live at 13 Admiral's Way, and I'm the Associate Executive Director of Green Roots. I'm here to speak on just two matters. First is public participation. I have been extremely disappointed and shocked that there has been no interpretation provided of the city council meetings for the community. Green Roots has played a critical role in ensuring that there's language access in Chelsea, that city council meetings, boards, and commission meetings, that there was interpretation provided and translation provided. And I was, I am shocked and baffled by the fact that this city council, these meetings, have provided no language access, zero, for the people watching from home. And so that's one point around access and participation. The fact that folks can't provide public comment virtually? It's been over a year of this pandemic. We should have figured this out a long time ago. The second point is around density. I'm also extremely concerned around the proposals and the reconsideration of what happened a couple of weeks ago. I feel like we are selling the city to the highest bidders. Whoever pays the most, whoever can afford it, will stay. And whoever can't is displaced and evicted. And so unless there are restrictions on affordability for the increased density, I urge you to vote no. We are reducing the lots of open space, the amount of open space and green space in our community. We are already the second most densely populated city in the Commonwealth. How much more density can we take? And honestly, the only reason I see us supporting density is if it's for the people that live here, the folks that can afford it. So I urge you to devote no on the reconsideration and on the increased density. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Please state your name, your address, and you have four minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Flores, 107 Sherrill Street. I apologize for being out of breath. I just ran from home to be here. So I'm here in support of the proposal that fellow community member Manuel Tache proposed at the city charter meeting. This proposal fixes the injustice of noncitizens of Chelsea. Parents of Chelsea Public Schools have devoted their lives to this community of Chelsea. Yet, the city and state tell them that they have no right to vote in local elections. A great number of immigrants who come to the United States struggle to get a proper paperwork to become citizens. It is time-consuming and an economic burden process. We have seen unfair restrictions of voting in the past, literacy taxes, poll taxes, grandfather clauses on a black population. Chelsea has always been a welcoming city for immigrants, and it's now a sanctuary city. The dream for many immigrants in Chelsea today is not just to provide for our families here and back home, but feeling the sense of belonging. Voting gives us that. It allows us to feel united rather than feel like an outsider. Chelsea can do better for its people by allowing documented immigrants to vote in the city elections. Let's not wait for the state to correct this injustice. Let's lead by example. There are business owners who also live in the city that do not get to vote. Why? All they have is a work permit. The main labor force that kept the national economy, including our very own city, were our own workers during this pandemic. Some claim on social media that they're essential workers, yet not essential enough to allow them to vote in their city that they love. We cannot call a government representative of all people if a large number of their residents are excluded from the voting process. I always thought that voting was a right that everyone is entitled to rather than a privilege. Every youth that comes through here advocating for different matters represent more than just themselves. They represent their family and friends. My vote represents four other individuals in my household for the simple fact that my document says citizen when there it says a resident. How can we correct this injustice? By starting to look at voting as a right rather than a privilege for those who were lucky enough to have the accurate paperwork that allows them to voice their own opinions in the city that they live in. Just like many others, I was not born on this side of the border. Yet, there's more people who are more politically engaged on the other occurrences of Chelsea that do not have the ability to vote. People of Chelsea are already underrepresented. We have to fight for the injustice of our own city's economic burden. Other cities receiving almost three times the amount of money despite Chelsea's body being almost twice as large as other cities like Newton. If we're able to fix the injustice of underrepresentation at the city level, hopefully, the injustice and underrepresentation will be fixed at the state level. Having family members vote will spark youth to not just advocate for their family and themselves, but to vote and make their voices be heard. We're asking for the right to vote with people who have some sort of legal status in the U.S., such as work permits, visas, and permanent residence. There will not be voting sessions on the charter yet, so we are just asking for our members to take our concerns into consideration. We want to condemn injustices. We want to create an inclusive Chelsea. We want to highlight that we are one community, not two. We want to highlight this promise is ours collectively. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Any other members? Great. So seeing that no one else wishes to speak, that portion of the meeting is now closed. Now we move on to the approval of the minutes. What is the wish of the council? I see, I see. Counselor Ennio Lopez moves to accept and file the minutes for our last meeting. So now we move on to communications from the city manager.
First communication from the city manager, acceptance of Eastern Avenue as city-owned roadway. Dear councilors, since I began my tenure here almost six years ago, I have been communicating with Mastart regarding its desire that the city acquire Eastern Avenue, which is currently a state-owned public way. The city and the Commonwealth had long ago agreed in the days of receivership that the city would eventually take ownership of Eastern Avenue following the Commonwealth's comprehensive reconstruction of that roadway in the late 1990s, early 2000s. For the past few years, we have been negotiating the terms of this acquisition with Mastart, including requiring that Mastart perform certain final improvements. Those improvements, including installation of the new traffic signal system at the intersection of Central Eastern Avenue, are now substantially complete. There is one remaining punch list item, the paving of Eastern Avenue from Willoughby Street to Broadway. Mastart has committed to complete this work as part of the acquisition of the roadway by the city. Further, once the city gains ownership of this roadway, we will issue a permit to the MWRA for a new traffic signal at the intersection of Eastern Avenue and Griffin Way, an improvement that the MWRA will fully fund. The first step in the legal process of acquiring ownership of this current state roadway is a vote by the city council to approve the discontinuance of the state highway. Once this vote is completed, Mastart will undertake the required survey and the legal work to formally transfer ownership to the city. For the, for the reason above, I respectfully ask that the city council approve the discontinuance of Eastern Avenue as a state highway. A draft of the order of discontinuance is attached. Approval by the city council will complete the promise made by the city during receivership to assume ownership and maintenance of this roadway in return for its reconstruction.
What's the wish of the council? Do you have a motion? Do I have a motion from any city councillor? Do you wish to accept and file under suspension? There be something new coming out of new business? Great. So Counselor Ennio Lopez moves to accept and file under suspension. There'll be something coming up under new business.
Next communication received from the city manager, city grants. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the recent city council order requesting the information on existing grants. For the council's review, I have attached a list of outstanding city grants sorted by the department overseeing the grant. The document includes all grant amounts. In all cases, the grants have restrictions on how the money must be spent. These grant funds are independent of the operating budget for each of the departments, and these grant funds are not reflected in the fiscal year operating budgets presented to the city council for approval. The one thing we do reflect in our budget documents, and will do again this year, are those employee salaries that are covered by such grants. I hope this information is helpful, city manager.
Great. What's the wish of the council? Counselor Robinson moves to accept and file the communication under suspension. We move on to the next item. We have a communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino regarding an update on Forbes and Quiet Zone reconstruction. Quiet Zone construction, I apologize. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the recent city council orders requesting an update on the Forbes project and the establishment of a quiet zone. The Forbes development received zoning board of appeals approval for the development of 590 units, 590 units and some accessory development in 2019. The decision was filed on September 16, 2019. Under our zoning ordinance, an applicant has two years from the filing date to commence construction. However, because of COVID, the state legislature told this start date from March 10, 2020, through December 1, 2020. So the Forbes owner has until June 8, 2022, to commence construction. Unfortunately, it appears at this point that the developer does not have any intention of moving forward. The city has heard from several different parties that the project is being marketed. Thus far, we have informed all those inquiring that the city will not support any deviation from the existing special permit conditions if the property is sold. As for the implementation of the quiet zone, here is the latest. The city's engineering consultant, BHB, has continued to advance the design of an ad-grade railroad crossings for the reestablishment of the quiet zone through the city. Once the proposed improvements are constructed, the Federal Railroad Administration, FRA, will certify that these crossings are rated high enough to eliminate the need for train horns during trips through the city unless emergency conditions present. Unfortunately, during the course of BHB's design work, the FRA determined that instead of improving only four of the grade crossings that BHB originally proposed, the city would be required to make improvements at all six crossings in Chelsea in order to meet the full FRA quiet zone designation. Because of this increase in the scope of work, BHB anticipates that the project will likely conclude in December of 2021. An updated schedule is attached. The revised schedule shows the completion of the design in May, public bidding in June, and construction through early December. The goal is to achieve from the FRA a notice of quiet zone establishment before the end of 2021. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension.
We have Counselor Robinson making a motion to accept and file under suspension.
Next communication from the city manager, update on Pearl Park Congress Traffic Study. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the city council order requesting a copy of the tech traffic study for the Pearl Park Congress Street intersection. As I mentioned last summer, the tech study funded by the city council in 2019 was seriously delayed by COVID. However, we do anticipate that this study with both recommendations and cost estimates should be completed within the next 30 to 45 days. As soon as the study is complete, I will forward a copy to the city council.
What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objections.
Okay. Anyone wish to speak? Great. So we move on.
Community Center. Dear councilors, I am writing in response to the recent city council orders requesting that. Once again, I look into the creation of a community center. Given how often this request has been made to me over the past six years, I am fully aware that the creation of a community center has been an aspiration for the city council for quite some time. The constraint truly is funding. If the city wishes to create a community center, it will need to make two significant financial commitments. The first will be the commitment of funds for acquisition of a site. Either through purchase of a building or long-term lease and built out of some existing space in the city. However, even after the physical space is required, the city will need a similar significant and long-term financial commitment to operational expenses, the most significant of which will be the large annual salary cost for staff. Given the city's other current financial priorities, many generated by the ongoing impacts of COVID, I don't believe it is feasible to finance a community center in the near term. However, this should remain a future goal for the city.
Okay. What is the wish of the council?
I'd say we accept the file of communication, but we also in, we should set up a subcommittee on discussions because I know it has been a lot of city council members who have been interested in finding out how we can go forward.
We're a community center. If we do want to go forward, we have to know what we're getting our hands or getting the body into. And I think it'd be a good time to discuss that in a subcommittee.
Thank you, councilors. Counselor Brown moves to accept and file under suspension, and we move to conference. Next item on our agenda, that is the end of the communications by the city manager portion. So now we move on to communications and petitions to the council. The first item is a communication received from the city clerk, Jeanette Sinthron White, in regards to a reconsideration letter filed on proposed zoning amendments.
Dear honorable council members, please be advised that city council Leo Robinson has requested reconsideration on the vote taken in the proposed zoning amendments, which failed the pass-by-two-thirds requirement at the March 8, 2021 meeting.
Okay. What is the wish of?
I would, I would ask for a roll call on the, for reconsideration. And my, my purpose to ask for reconsideration was being able to take the amendments one at a time. My interest, that I felt very strongly, was the mixed-use overlay district. There's been a misconception here that this is something new. We've been working on this for two years here in this chamber. And people have been invited many times to come to the chamber. We also had interpreters here to interpret for anybody who needed interpreter. So I just want to kind of make that clear. You know, so my goal, that's my purpose in asking for reconsideration was to deal with the mixed-use overlay district, which encompasses where Stop &amp; Shop is. And if Stop &amp; Shop is to leave, Everett has the right to build whatever they want to build there. And we would possibly end up with just a parking lot if this situation regards to the amendment I was interested in does not pass. So I'd ask for a roll call on reconsideration.
Accept and file a communication and roll call a reconsideration.
Okay. So to clarify, the, the motion that is properly before you is Counselor Leo Robinson's motion to?
Counselor Robinson has requested reconsideration in accordance with Article 15 of his special rules. A yes vote would be reconsidered, the vote taken at the last meeting on the zoning amendments, which would, if you get the six votes, bring it back to discussion amongst the. which would, if you get the six votes, bring it back to discussion amongst the members and a vote again. A no vote would be to deny the reconsideration, and you wouldn't have anything before you.
Correct.
Thank you, councillor clerk. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, roll call.
Councillor Vito? Councillor Abisenada?
Yes.
Councillor Recupero? Absent. Councillor Garcia?
No.
Councillor Vega Maldonado?
No.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Lopez?
No.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
And Councillor Zabat?
No.
No. One, two, three, four in favor, one, two, three, four, five opposed, and two absent. The motion is defeated. Your next communication is from Judith Garcia.
Okay, so the next communication received from councillor Judith Garcia in regards to the charter review committee recommendations. What is the wish of the council? Councillor Robinson moves to accept and file under suspension, and we move to a conference. Next item on our agenda is a communication received from community preservation committee chair Jose Iraeta Saldana in regards to the rehabilitation of the clock tower. To the honourable Chelsea City Council, the Chelsea Community Preservation Committee is pleased to send the city council a recommendation for a grant from the Community Preservation Fund. This recommendation is for the rehabilitation of the City Hall clock tower. The recommendations of the committee are sent to the city council, where the amounts can be affirmed, rejected, or lowered. Funding recommendations may not be increased. The committee is composed of four members appointed by the city manager and confirmed by city council, as well as a representative from five city organizations as required by statute: Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, a park commissioner, Planning Board, and Housing Authority. All of the members are active participants in the community, and seven of the eight are residents with one physician vacant. At its 16 July 2020 meeting, the Community Preservation Committee recommended approval of one application for referral to council, that is CP 20-02 Rehabilitation of the City Hall Clock Tower for $150,000. The order for council's consideration of this grant and a summary of the project are attached. Your timely consideration will be greatly appreciated by the community and the committee. We would welcome the opportunity to answer any questions you may have. Best regards, Jose Agustin Iraeta Saldana, Chairperson, Chelsea Community Preservation Committee. What is the wish of the council?
No business.
Okay, councillor Robinson moves to accept and file communication under suspension. Now we move on to the next item. We have a communication received from Chelsea High School teachers Sam Baker and Adam Goodstone.
You want me to read it? My name is Sam Baker, and I am instructional coach at Chelsea High School and former history teacher at the Brown Middle School. My colleague Adam Goodstone, the history lead teacher at Chelsea High School, and I are writing to address the way in which two of our students were treated at the February 22nd city council meeting, both during and immediately following the meeting. Beginning next year, all middle and high school students in Massachusetts will begin implementing the state civics project. We believe that our students, Richard Flores and Brandon Garcia, were treated disrespectfully and unfairly by councillor Recupero. Over the next few years, many students will be coming before the city council to advocate for changes they believe in. Based on how our students were received in these past two meetings, we are deeply worried about what will happen to future students. On February 22, Richard and Brandon advocated for a cause that they believe in and were clear, concise, and appropriately respectful in their appeal. Richard and Brandon were taken at a risk and, for the first time in their lives, working to advocate for a change that they believed in. They requested a heavy vote on the removal of the Columbus stats that was not intended to be offensive or to cancel any sort of historical record. They simply were advocating for a vote on an issue that they believed in and wanted to see resolved. We are not writing this letter to debate the historical record of white colonizers. Our intent with this letter is to remind council members of their civic responsibility to engage with the youth of the community, and they represent in a respectful and appropriate manner. We are concerned that if the students are treated in this way in the future, it will harm both our students and negatively impact the way in which our community is perceived. Furthermore, we also want to note that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires all students to complete a civics project at some point in their high school career. This legislation was passed in 2017 and requires all students in the Commonwealth to create a civics project in which they advocate for a change to a municipal, local, or state policy issue. This project requires students to engage with the local leaders at the city level. As a result of the project's implementation, you will very shortly have hundreds of students looking to engage with each of you on issues they care about. We are deeply concerned about what will happen if future students are received in a similar manner to how? To how Brandon and Richard were received. We welcome the council to disagree with our students and engage in civil discourse messages we're sending to our students about how the city views them. Similarly, what messages will this send more broadly about our city's values and how it treats the citizens? It is our collective job to welcome, support, and encourage the youth of our city. We do want to note that several councillors supported the voices of Brandon and Richard, and listened carefully and respectfully to their appeal. We would appreciate that this grace and understanding be extended to all students who interact with the city council in the future. All public servants, and especially those who are elected representatives, need to be prepared to engage with youth more frequently and appropriately. These students are your constituents, and some days soon will be your colleagues.
Thank you. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objections.
Councillor Robinson moves to accept and file under suspension. We now move on to the next item. We have a late communication received from councillor Roya Avellaneda regarding the proposed zoning amendments. And actually, councillor? We have a late communication from councillor Roya.
I'm going to object to that, because in the past, these bodies have rejected letters and communications from residents and from some councillors, so I'm going to object to that.
So Ennio, councillor Lopez moves to object, but I believe that due to the lack of consideration, so the vote wasn't considered, so this will not be in front of us. So, thank you councillor. Now we move on to the next item, unfinished business. We have a resolution introduced by councillor Avellaneda in regards to 4143 Orange Street Affordable Housing Trust Fund transfer request. What is the wish of the council? Councillor Avellaneda?
I make a motion to adopt on a roll call vote.
Okay, councillor Avellaneda moves to adopt on a roll call vote.
A yes would be to?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Does anyone wish to discuss it? Any comments? Councillor Avellaneda, you have the floor.
Thank you. Last Thursday, we had a presentation from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund board member, and also Alex Payne, to explain to us that this would be the first property that the city would transfer over to the AFP under the recently adopted law that any property taken by tax title can be handed over to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In this case, as it was planned, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund board planned on creating an RFP to solicit from developers the possibility of building off this lot anywhere from three to four units of housing that would be affordable, and there would be ownership opportunities. So I'm hoping that this is something that this council and many advocates have been asking for, and that we will be passing in favor. This will not be the end of it. We will have more opportunity to speak on this matter directly to the AFP when they do their request for proposal, and there'll be more input as to what will be built there, along with, of course, the opportunity of our public input with this goes in front of the zoning board. So it's a long process publicly, will be accessible, and I'm hoping that my colleagues will be able to save it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillors? Councillor Brown?
Thank you. Just want to, like what Abisenada said, regarding the meeting, I want to thank Gary DeYoung for also spearheading the effort. He's a member of Affordable Trust Fund, Housing Fund. So as conference stated, this is the first time it's a property that the city has. It's going to be fair, it's going to be open to, you know, different folks to come in and try to help us with it. But most importantly, it's going to be a project that the city of Chelsea is going to try to mimic and do in the future to help Chelsea residents to afford homes. There was a question about whether it would be rentals or whether it would be homeownership, and I think the board was just, you know, getting information from what the council would like the desire to be. Obviously, we want to see it be homeownership, but again, it's what that we can get accomplished, and we hope that more of these projects will come up in the future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillors? Councillor Robinson.
I'll come to the conference on Thursday. This is a very big step here for us. My ask, and to the Affordable Housing Trust Board, was let's get away from only doing one or two bedroom units. My request is to see the possibility of some three-bedroom units. You know, and I would, I support the homeownership aspect. I think it's important that we look at three-bedroom units as opposed to one or two that don't really accommodate a lot of our families here in this community. So I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillors wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we move on to roll call.
A yes vote would be to adopt, and no vote would be to deny. Councillor Vito? Councillor Abisenada?
Yes.
Councillor Recupero? Absent. Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
And Councillor Zabat?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, motion carries.
Great, before we move on, I want to make mention that school committee member Rosemary Carlyle is joining us in representation of the school committee board. So, thank you Rosemary. Now we move on to second readings. The first item is an order introduced by councillor Robinson in regards to prior year expenditures of $150 from FY '18, $240 from FY '19, and $2,925 from FY '20 from the Inspectional Services Department expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid emergency board of services balance owed to maximum emergency services. Do I have a motion, councillor Robinson?
Call vote on the adoption.
Okay, councillor Robinson moves to a roll call.
A yes vote would be to adopt, and no vote would be to deny. Councillor Vito? Absent. Councillor Abisenada?
Yes.
Councillor Recupero? Absent. Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Vega Maldonado? Councillor Vega Maldonado? Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
And Councillor Zabat?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, the motion is adopted.
Okay, now we move on to the second item. Order introduced by councillor Robinson in regards to prior year expenditures of $127.73 from the Human Resources Department expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid employee health fare supplies balance to Demula Supermarket, Inc. What is the wish of the council?
Ask for a roll call vote on the adoption.
Councillor Robinson moves for a roll call.
A yes vote would be to adopt, a no vote would be to deny. Councillor Vito? Absent. Councillor Abisenada? Yes. Councillor Recupero? Absent. Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
And Councillor Zabat?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed, two absent, the motion is adopted.
Okay, now, that portion of the meeting is closed, we move on to new business. We have an order introduced by councillor Garcia in regards to the acceptance of Eastern Avenue as city-owned roadway. What is the wish of the council?
Request a roll call vote on the adoption.
Councillor Robinson makes a motion to waive the reading and request a roll call. Does anyone wish to speak? I see councillor Roya Avellaneda, you have the floor.
Thank you. I've asked that this be sent to a committee on conference to discuss. I know this is a matter that's been coming in front of the council for a while in previous, but there are some questions that I think need to be asked before we adopt it and speak to city manager and his staff to make sure that the concerns that were raised in the past are addressed before I take a vote on this and not just get to communication. And also, I want to hear a little bit more about the introduction of a traffic light on Griffin Way, which I think is just to appease the state employees on the MRRRA. So again, I'd like to have this at least go to conference.
Okay, so let me ask you councillor Avellaneda, are you requesting this under suspension or roll call? Please unmute.
Under suspension, Madam President.
Under suspension. Thank you. So we move on to, are there any objections here? Okay, so we move on to conference. And now, we, now that that portion of the meeting is closed, we move on to announcements. Does anyone have an announcement? You have an announcement? Okay, councillor Brown?
Not a really announcement, but hopefully it is an announcement.
Make it an announcement.
So I just want to, up on Admiral's Hill this morning, late last night, there was a report of a shooting, and I just want to let folks know that I did speak to the police, and I think a lot of us city council members, we received a email that there was shots fired. There was about six shots fired. Reached out to the police chief, reached out to the city manager, it was helpful in, you know, getting the information that we need. It was probably shots fired up in the air. There was no injuries. There were two people arrested. An eyewitness from Admiral's Hill gave a report of someone that she or he believed was the shooters. Under the description that was given, the police was right on the scene, and they was able to find someone with that description. Two arrests was made, a gun was recovered, and again, no one was injured. I know it's alarming. I know folks are, you know, with this pandemic, folks are just doing crazy things, but I ask that our residents continue to be very watchful for what we see and hear, and please report it to the police and let them do the job. In this case here, again, it was no injuries, and I just want us to believe and know that we are safe in our communities, but people are out there doing some crazy things, some unsettled, I shouldn't say crazy, but people are frustrated. People are doing some things that, you know, shooting six bullets in the air could have easily went through someone's window and injured someone or even killed someone. We have had that here before, so we want people to be aware of that. Even if you're frustrated, you pull out a gun and you start shooting, you don't know where those bullets are going to go. And we just want- know where those bullets are going to go, and we just want you to be careful. Thank you for also calling the cops.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Any other counselors? Well, if there's no objection, I do have a announcement to make, and this was provided to us by our Commissioner of Public Works, Fidel. Uh, we actually have some exciting news for everyone who is at home watching. Some of the good news on these challenging times is that now you can save energy and money while keeping your tenants more comfortable in twenty twenty-one. So this is actually a pretty cool program. For a limited time, the sponsors of MassSave are offering owners of one to four-unit residential buildings a hundred percent off, all-approved insulation for all rental units. These energy upgrades can make your building more comfortable and reduce maintenance costs. So this is a pretty cool opportunity. It's insulation combined with no-cost air sealing. It may also reduce insect and rodent infiltration, lower noise levels in buildings, and even allow installation of smaller HVAC systems in the future. So it's a pretty cool program for Chelsea residents. All you need to do to sign up for MassSave no-cost home, and it's, it's for no-cost home energy assessment. This assessment can be done virtually. It could be done by phone or video. So, um, it is at no cost to you, so if you're watching, this is completely free, the assessment is completely free. The City of Chelsea has partnered with All In Energy, a nonprofit, to connect the owners of residential properties in Chelsea with one of four units to this opportunity. So, some of the perks is we recommend reductions in your building's energy consumption, it provides you and your tenants with eligible instant energy savings, it also provides light bulbs, high efficiency shoreheads, so it's, it's a pretty cool program. So please sign up to schedule a no-cost energy assessment. Call All In Energy, which is the nonprofit, today at nine seven eight two three seven four five three zero. Again, that number is nine seven eight two three seven four five three zero, or visit Briefly, para las personas que nos están viendo, este es un mensaje de nuestro comisionado de obras públicas. Hay un programa fascinante para los dueños de edificios de una a cuatro unidades con un cien por ciento de descuento en insulación en todas las unidades de su alquiler. Así que para poder disfrutar de este beneficio, lo único que tiene que hacer es inscribirse para una evaluación de energía. Esta evaluación de energía se puede hacer de manera virtual, por teléfono, o por videochat. Así que no requiere nada, no le va a costar absolutamente nada, y nos queremos asegurar que se mantengan seguros durante esta pandemia. Trae muchísimos beneficios, ya que puede disminuir los costos, y a la vez puede crear un sello de infiltración de insectos y roedores. Así que les pedimos que si está interesado en la evaluación, esto requiere una evaluación de energía, y tiene que llamar a la organización All In Energy. El número de teléfono es nueve siete ocho dos tres siete cuatro cinco tres zero. Una vez más, es nueve siete ocho dos tres siete cuatro cinco tres zero. O visite la página web, www.chelseymaahorra.org. Thank you. Now, we move on. Anyone else with announcements? Great, so we move on to moments of silence. Does anyone have a moment of silence? Counselor Robinson?
I'd like a moment of silence for the folks from Atlanta who lost their lives over the past few days.
Anyone else?
Yeah, two. One, I'd like the moment of silence for neighbor, friend up on Admiral's Hill, Mary Bullock. She passed away last week. My condolences to her and her family. And also, um, I know it's a week, almost eight days old, but, um, condolences to the Hagler family. Marvin Hagler not only was a friend, but he was a person that I really got inspiration and encouragement by as a young fighter in New England in the Golden Gloves. He was our Muhammad Ali. He was our superstar. He was our inspiration, and tragically, he lost his life about eight days ago, and I just want to, again, publicly say, he was a true champion and a true inspiration. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we move on to the moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.